I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to regular session of Goldendale City Council for December 19th, 2022. And I want to draw your attention before we go any further. At the very bottom, we have the next session of City Council will be January 3rd, and it'll start at 6:00 PM. Make sure everybody gets that word out, 6, not 7, 6:00 PM. We have a full council with the exception of Lauren Maynor. Do we have a motion to excuse Lauren?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Maynor from attendance at this Goldendale City Council for December 19th, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. And this pretty open public hearing now is for the 2023 proposed budget, which was discussed by the council at last, council meeting and, and yes. When we get down to resolutions or to ordinances, we will have a motion to pass if the council just so chooses. Are there any comments from the public either on the telephone or here in the council chamber? Or anything the council itself would like to ask or say? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing for 2023 proposed budget. And we'll move on to the agenda. I need to make an amendment. You have it on the packet that you picked up as you came in with the red print under item G5. That material is in your packet. And it has to do with the AT&amp;T Telephone First Net Agreement, which will be presented later in the council business. With that amendment, do we have a motion to accept and approve the agenda and the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda and the agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this session and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
In your post. Thank you. We'll go now to Department of Sports. We have a first here from our Police Chief, Jay Hansacker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one item there. I have two entry level officers, excuse me, in the last stage of their testing phase before a conditional offer can be given. So as soon as they finish that last portion, which is the face-to-face with the psychologist, we can proceed further. So kind of excited about that. And we're ready to get to rolling. So hopefully, you know, they accept the conditional offers, being that we're a small department under 10. The Criminal Justice Training Center will give us priority of trying to get them in first, as far as the next academy classes. I'm hoping to send both at the same time. So we're only dealing with one five-month period.
Yep.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Incredible for Goldendale Fire Department.
First, I really didn't come with much to say, but I learned that I'm going to go here. I want to thank the Ross Foundation. They have given the fire department a $1,000 donation from their foundation. So that helps. Everything helps. Really appreciate it.
Excellent.
And then the last thing I'd tell the council is, some may know, some may not know. But at the end of this year, I have stepped down from the Assistant Chief of the Fire Department. So I'll still be on the Fire Department, but that's not filling that role.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate the service you've given. 28 years.
It was like 27.
27. Long. Are you a senior fireman? Are you a senior fireman? Was there somebody in there longer than you?
Oh, no. There's people that are longer than me.
Still on there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, congratulations anyway. We'll hear from our clerk treasurer on something she wanted to bring to our attention.
Oh, so Doug didn't say anything what Public Works doing besides just plowing snow. Lots of snow plowing. But the wastewater treatment plant did get an award from the Department of Ecology and its Outstanding Performance Award for 2021. And basically, when they do every month and all year long, they do all of their testings, and they had no violations all year for 2021. So we just got this in the mail the other day.
That's great.
So good job to Andy and Robert for all their hard work in doing that.
We have shy water specialists that don't like to come.
I tried to force them, but they wouldn't.
But they did great work. Great work. Thanks, Andy. And also, we have on the Zoom Jeff Railey from the Building Department. And Jeff has provided you with an update on code enforcement activities. And Jeff, did you want to make a report other than this or just answer questions?
Oh, you have to unmute yourself. Hold on, Jeff. Did you unmute you? There you go.
All right. Sorry about that.
Now we can hear you.
I can't noise. Hopefully, you'll just be able to go through the notes and have some questions, and I can answer them for you. But the easy basics of it is, we stay busy this year trying to do multiple things in the Building Department and also with the code enforcement. It's a difficult situation. But if you read through it, I think you'll like the update. We try to stay busy this year, so.
Any comments or questions?
I'd just like to comment on the work that Jeff is doing.
Yes.
Just, you know, just came in this evening and seen, seen the data that he presented this. Haven't really had a time to go through it, but that looks pretty thorough. And I would just like to thank you for the job you're doing. Keep up the good work.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments or questions? Now, we'll either put this on as a discussion item for the next City Council meeting. Give you time to go through if you have questions, or if not, we won't do that. But I think it will help to understand how much Jeff does and what an incredible task he has before him, day in and day out. And we appreciate Jeff very, very much.
I do also. I appreciate what I'm working with now. I really do. It's changed the atmosphere for me. And one thing that I would come from this position and ask is, the board get together and figure out seriously what you want for compliance. Because I, I have a very difficult time driving around the neighborhood, handing out business cards, which I do more of than send letters. But the letters are repetitious. And with a lot of the customers that they go to, they've been going to for years. I mean, absolute years. And I need teeth. I, for compliance to actually function in a small town like this, everybody has to be on board. All the council, all the staff, everyone understands that there are certain things that we are going to go after this year, and certain things that I'm just going to have to tolerate. And I try not to tolerate the small stuff that turns into the big stuff. But if the council could come together with an agreement on what it is that they would like compliance to look like, I can make it look any way other than the way it is. I can't stay on the hamster wheel, just sending out letters to people and expecting no return. So the part I have, and I appreciate Pat, I really do. And he says that he is going to help rewrite the ordinances so that I have teeth. But I also need the City Council to stop long enough and figure out, the last portion of this update that I gave you is talking about the two evangements that we did this year. And the problem that I have is a 50 by 100 lot in Goldendale is a $50,000, I mean, a 50 by 100 lot is, is average about $50,000 to $60,000. I just took $38,000, and I'm going to put that on top of this. And it's not for nothing, but I have to have you understand that it costs money every time I talk to the attorney, every time I do anything with a piece of property other than just send a letter. That costs us also about $11 every time that we do that. And I need the system to work that if I send three letters, if they're high enough on the list, let's move them up the chain. But I, I need you to look at that section for the code enforcement, because this is where I fall down. And maybe you can help me. I'm afraid, I'm very afraid to put 18 properties in Goldendale with that kind of price tag sitting on top of them, because there's going to be 18 lots that people don't want because they're half again more expensive to deal with. So this is truly where compliance falls down. And I need a system where, from the time I start it to the time I finish it, we all are going to be in agreement that you're down about $25,000 with attorney's fees and cleanup costs and everything else. So let's take Cottonwood Park. All of those are individual, individuals that I have to go after individually with the owner of the property, right, to try and help them ease their pain. I go through there once every week, and since I've begun that process, they've evicted four people. However, their stuff's still there. You know what I mean? And at some point, they're just going to throw their arms up and say, I really don't know what to do. So the big violators that I have in town, I would like to figure out some agreement with them that the city will come and help them somehow. You know what I mean? Individual lots. I, I, I need some way to help these people. I really do. So I'm sorry to take so much of your time, but I need, I need a system that will work and I can help people, help them. Compliance is just punishing. So if I have other alternatives that I can hand these people off to and maybe get some assistance with, maybe we can all sit down and brainstorm. But I do need some help in compliance. And the council needs to tell me how much money I can spend, and the rest of it all will work out. So thank you for the time.
Well, Jeff, I think the first start would be with the ordinance committee. We can meet with the ordinance committee, and it'd be great if you could be there with us. And that would be a start. And then we'll pass it on to the rest of the council, and we'll kind of go from there.
Yes, sir.
And it'll be a, and Jeff, discussions. We need to get this solved. It's important. Important for not only our code enforcement officer, but also for the city's operation and the business of the city. Thank you, Jeff.
Enjoy your day, sir.
We'll be together. Appreciate it. We'll go on now to council business. The first item on the business list is prosecuting attorney contract. And Sandy is going to explain the situation with that item.
So this is an annual contract that we normally fill out. However, the city's prosecuting attorney is retiring at the end of this year, which is Gwendolyn Reddy. She's done it for several years. The staff, we advertised for the position, conducted the interviews, and made an offer to Lance Fitzgerald. Lance has agreed to provide prosecuting attorney services for the city. And this will take place January 1st through December 31st. And so at $6,000 a month. So the staff recommends this approval.
An attorney Fitzgerald was interviewed by Chief Hansacker, Pat, Sandy, and myself to determine qualifications and his way of approaching this requirement. He's also prosecuting attorney, and Stevenson, and White, and they're well-regarded, very active attorney.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the services of Lance Fitzgerald for the amount of $6,000 per month, starting January 1, 23, December 31, 23.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have the discussion or comments before we vote? If not, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute a personal services contract with Lance Fitzgerald in the amount of $6,000 per month for the period through January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is the 911 Dispatch Services Agreement. This is kind of the end-of-the-year item, and Sandy will also present that for us.
So this is an agreement for dispatch services. Once again, we do this annually. They did ask for us to do a five-year agreement. So the city will pay the county $45,020.35 from January to December. And then after next year, that'll go up 3% every year after that. So they say we can pay it quarterly every January, April, July, and October. This is an increase of $1,300 from last year, is the amount that it will amount.
Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I moved authorize the mayor to execute the interlocal radio system use at 911 Dispatch Services Agreement in the amount of $45,020.35 for the period from January 1, 23 to December 31, 23, and adjusted thereafter as presented in the agreement.
I'll second that.
Thank you, both. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute the interlocal radio system use in 911 Dispatch Services Agreement in the amount of $45,020.35 for the period from January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023, and adjusted thereafter as presented in the agreement. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
One and one abstention. Now, the next item is not something that we're going to make a motion on, but this is the information that you had asked for on the rate study that's being undertaken. It's not completed yet, but this is something to give you an idea of the approach and what the, at least what the trend seems to be as far as the rates. The CS group has provided a study to determine the impact of inflation on our utility operation expenses. And since the most recent construction cost indices ranges from 11.8% to 14.5%. And the CPI for water, the CPI for water for October ended at 8.1%. FCW group states that implementing a 10% to 11% increase to capture recent operating and capital cost increases would be justified and would help soften and further, any further rate increases that may be recommended once the full study is completed. This is for your discussion purposes, whether we discuss it here or we discuss it in the
Committee.
The committee, which is the best place to begin. But at the same time, the committee will also provide its recommendations. But this is only a study item. It's not the complete report yet. And we're going to have reports like this on costs throughout the next coming years with the type of inflation we've suddenly been hit with. So I think you'll, as you go through the report, you'll see the efforts made and the reasoning and the outlook for what this is going to be. It's, it's a good report, but it's not a good report as far as the, what's awaiting both consumers and our departments as far as their operating expenses and their need for increased revenues to be able to develop what's required in this field. The Consumer Price Index drives all these options. We're going to see it again and again and again. The CPI is Consumer Price Index. Right now, it's over 8%. Are there any questions or comments on this? We're not going to vote on it, but if you have something that we need to talk about now, or we'll send it to the committee, and from there, we'll have that recommendation and further discussion by the council. We'll wait and see what, what comes from the council, and we will have that on the agenda once that council is able to take it up and discuss it, and once we get the final report as well.
Right. I would like to see this go to committee once Pat gets back.
Yep, we will. That's it.
We'll see a little bit more.
It's amazing the value of these committees. They're incredibly helpful to the council.
Looks like the numbers turned out pretty close to what Pat thought they were going to be for us.
Yes. And we've been looking at other cities with the same, pretty much the same population, same water systems to some extent. And they're all facing large increases, unfortunately. The next item of business is the MOU between the City of Goldendale and the Chamber of Commerce. And I'll present that item. I talked with Nicole Ledney, the executive director for the chamber today. And I recommended that she stay off these icy roads tonight. And she was quite happy to do that. But this is an agreement that will further establish the working relationship between the Chamber of Commerce and the City of Goldendale. And that's always a very positive thing when these two particular agencies are working together in all sorts of things, not just tourism, but other aspects. As you'll see in this agreement, it has some very interesting parts to it. And this is because of the grant that was received from the Department of Commerce. And it was part of a larger grant. But for this item, it's establishing the working agreement that I mentioned before. Oh, okay. Welcome. Let us see if you want. Please. As far as the background on this memorandum of understanding with the Chamber of Commerce for Goldendale, the chamber was enlisted as a partner to the city in the application for the Small Business Innovation Grant. And it aided tremendously in the grant application itself by proposing to manage the direct business assurance portion of the project, should the city be awarded the funding, and it did. The total amount of the direct business assistance portion of the grant is a total of $108,000, including $102,000 for consulting services by third parties to direct business, business assistance to Goldendale area businesses. Our, our small businesses and large will benefit from this type of expertise. The $8,000, the $6,000 for Goldendale Chamber of Commerce, coordination of the direct business assist, the direct business assistant portion of the grant is the tellable load. And additionally, the Goldendale Small Business Development Center offered a match to services to provide a workshop for hotel and restaurant management by this Small Business Development Center expert advisor. And the SBDC advisor is with the county, but we can work with them. We've always had to go to another county, usually Oregon, to have that kind of support, and it's making a difference for us. Now, if you look at the accelerator program budget, that lists the different items of the budget, the different parts that they're going to be looking at, from business and community workshops and business walkthroughs, letting people see different aspects of businesses. The finance workshop, they help in expansion, businesses expanding and businesses starting up. Merchandising and retail inventory management, helping these small companies to deal with not only the inventory, but the shortages. I would imagine David's run into that sometimes with his enterprise. And also branded marketing workshop, that's something that the council's very, the Chamber of Commerce is very involved in, is helping to market our city and our brand, so that we're more widely known. On this item, the memorandum of understanding between the chamber and the city, City of Goldendale, is the staff recommendation to, in support of this MOU, we have a motion to activate this plan.
I can't seem to find my, my big packet here. I've lost it. But I believe there was something in that about that, that grant for the Innovator Building.
Right, that's included in, it's not included in this, but they will be helping us with the design and the work in that area. I think that's included in here. I saw it.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's there.
It's like the start of it, right?
Right, this is the beginning, establishing all of these things. But to have an accelerator program with a budget like this, it's very unique for Goldendale. We've not had this type of support and assistance in business development like this.
Well, absolutely. Well, I'd agree more. Right. That part about that grant for the Innovator Building has some strings attached that are unachievable.
What is this?
And that's, when we get the money, we've only got a short period, about three months.
Yes, yeah, we're looking very closely at that.
And it can't happen.
Whether the way it is, we may not make it, you know.
We won't. And once we sign onto that, I'd like to know more about that understanding. And if we commit to it, how much we're held to that, and with the impression that we, if we sign off on it, we start going forward as much as we can. When we get to the three months, we're not even close. Well, the rest of the funds aren't available. We have to finish it on our own.
It's more than three months. It's like, isn't it?
End of May.
End of June.
End of May.
End of May.
Yeah, right.
Really close.
Well, maybe only three months. It's more than three months, though, right?
Yes, it is.
Because it's the start of the winter. Yeah, no, I understand. But Steve was saying it's only three months.
Three months. You're saying how much?
It's like, it goes to Jim.
End of, end of May.
End of May. Six months.
That's still crowded.
But one of the things Steve will be doing is working with Department of Commerce for an extension. I think, I don't know that we'll have success with it, but we will certainly apply to extend that so we can actually finish a very valuable project for the city. I mean, that's, we'll have the council's support in that effort to get that extension.
Yeah, Mayor, I would really, hopefully, we could. I mean, I've done some research. It didn't look like we were able to do that. But then, first, like Steve mentioned, three months, it may be three months of building. And we're not going to get much done in January and February.
It's going to take that long to engineer.
Well, yes, that's about the length we'd be doing, yeah, forest contraction. I don't, yeah, I know, that's a tough question. It's a, I don't know. I'd really like to look into it some more. And like the mayor said, to see if we can get an extra two or three month extension, if that could be done. And we'll just have to look into that.
And in seeking that extension, we'll have not only the city's efforts to get the extension, but also working with the chamber, which is very positive for the Department of Commerce to see two agencies that strong working together on a common project in economic development.
Well, I couldn't agree more. On everything said, I do have reservations with that particular part that they have moved it forward on assumptions and hope. I don't think that's a good idea. Moving forward on assumptions and hope, I don't think that's a good idea.
You agree? What would you suggest we do?
Look into it more. I don't know how much anybody here knows about this in detail, that Innovator grant and what all is involved. All we've really been told is, well, we've received this grant and what's for it, and we got so much time to build it. That's it. I'd like to know more about what's going on.
Well, I think you have to have more, there's no question about that. Because this was part of a much longer grant. That's what's covering the building and all. And we've had extensive discussions on what we're, I think council members as well as people that have had, trying to line up with a county to help us get this done in a timely manner. That's just the way we have to go at it. But I think this memorandum of understanding would be a positive thing for us to have, to work on it. It won't block any of the information that you're asking, but we'll get that completely.
And that's just money that comes out of the grant?
That's it. It's not significant or super great.
So, Mayor, I think, well, the chamber does really good work, and I think if the city, if Pat essentially was doing the project by himself, it would definitely be not possible. But I think partnering with the chamber and having their whole team being able to help us, it makes it more feasible to move forward. And I know, the question I had asked Pat before is, would we get refunded on what is purchased? We may, yes, we may not complete it all by that timeframe, but anything that is purchased and all the stuff that we go through can be billed and refunded up to that date. I think still, like bringing in a business to a completely empty lot versus even a concrete pad that's already there is more promising. You know, have some utilities set up already that they can bring in their own building for at least of those lots. Otherwise, those lots are still sitting there.
Exactly.
Wasting away, right? Or it's wasting away.
It's an area that's business ready as far as utilities. So that part's there, but all the other constructions will be hampered by the weather for the future. Hopefully we'll get through that.
So, I will dare make the motion to, in support of this MOU. Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the MOU agreement between the city of Goldendale and the Goldendale Chamber of Commerce. If there are any questions or discussion, I'll call for a vote.
Mayor, I think we need to, you know, I guess I'll support it, but I think we need to do some more, definitely do some more research on this, you know, if we can get an extension or however we can make this system work. I mean, Bill has an idea, but, you know, I think we really got to work on this.
We will.
Yeah. I think that's part of what they're asking for on top of the prolonged more. It doesn't mean less time during the work on this project. So we kind of, if we're going to move forward, we need to move forward now versus into January.
Exactly. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining?
Nay.
One nay. Let me see. The next item is the AT&amp;T FirstNet Cell Phone Agreement, and Ken Wells will present that.
So I talked to you guys a couple council members meetings ago that we want to replace our System US Cellular and Verizon, those with the AT&amp;T FirstNet. So we have an agreement that we think will work and it'll save the city about $500 a month to switch our cell phones for our work phones to AT&amp;T.
Any questions or comments?
Now, you said the main reason we're switching is because US Cellular is shutting down some of their towers.
No, they didn't, well, AT&amp;T bought all of US Cellular towers in this area.
Oh.
So where we used to have service, we have no service. So AT&amp;T still rents some of the towers from, or US Cellular still rents some of the towers from AT&amp;T, but the service is gone. At a lot of places where we had service, we now have no service.
Okay.
So, and a lot of it is for, you know, water calls, there's alarms that go off that now we're not getting service to get those calls was the reason why we started looking into it.
For that reason?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mayor, I move to approve the transfer of cell phone companies from US Cellular to AT&amp;T FirstNet and authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the transfer of cell phone companies from US Cellular to AT&amp;T FirstNet and authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement. If there are not further comments or questions, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You completed, the council business will move now to resolutions, and this is the I-Works sole source resolution, 725, and this has to do with the questions from the last time this was considered, that wanting to note whether this was a sole source provider, which has been determined, and waiving the need for a drawing bid. That was the reason this is a very unique situation and a very unique opportunity for our city. Now, Sandy, were you going to discuss this or did you want me to?
Well, there was just some questions on cost. It was a little confusing the way they were presenting it. So the cost is going to be $32,000 to start with, and then the maintenance every year after that is $12,000 a year for a maintenance cost. So I think there was some confusion of the pricing that they had originally said they were quoting several different things, but that's the overall cost of $32,000 to start up and then $12,000 each year after that for maintenance.
And will this be out of public works budget already in place?
As far as I know, I don't know that they, well, because it uses, public works can use it, and also for building department can use it, so that'll probably come out of both of those budgets.
Yep.
But for all the things that they do and contract, we'll have to see exactly what services we're going to use and which part of the budget that will come out of.
So, I guess I will make a motion going on staff's recommendations for the program. The price is a little steep, but I guess as long as this is coming out of their existing budget, because there is no request for it to come out of any other budget.
Right.
So I'll move to adopt resolution 725, authorize the mayor to execute the contract agreement with I-Work Q in the amount of $32,000 for the year one and $12,000 annually thereafter, money to be used out of the department budgets only.
Right. We have a second.
I'll second it.
Any further questions or comments? If not, we'll call for a vote. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 725, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract agreement with I-Work in the amount of $32,000 for year one and $12,000 annually thereafter to be taken from the departments that this, the system will serve. That, correct, hold on. If there aren't further questions or comments, we'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Votes in the air. And the next item is ordinances, and this is the second reading of 2023 Budget Ordinance. This is what the council has agreed with. It's at the last consideration, it was ready for adoption. This is the second reading to be able to adopt this 2023 budget to get the funding started for this city. It's things you've worked with and discussed and commented and added to, so I think, and it's in your packet as well, so there's no changes. It's all edited by staff recommendation and is ready to adopt.
I move to approve ordinance number 1524, adopting the 2023 budget in the amount of $9,928,200 as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you, both. It's been moved and seconded to authorize ordinance number 1524, adopting the 2023 budget in the amount of $9,928,200 as presented. If there are not further questions or comments, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sometimes hard to see votes in this table. Next item is Report of Officers, and we'll begin with my one. Walton.
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor. I guess one thing that I believe we've all noticed that the red board sign is not working. I was hoping we'd get it going again before Christmas, but then it looks like we're not. And evidently, what I understand is going to take quite a bit of work. I don't understand what work needs to be done, but I hopefully next, next, next month or whatever, we get the red board sign going again. I think it just looks kind of blah with nothing up there. And I believe someday, the plan, or the chamber has a plan to, to make a bigger red board, have a bigger red board there, even with the whole frame. But that's down the road, that's down, that's going to be quite a while before the funding comes in for that. So that's why hopefully we get this red board going again. So that and just wish everyone happy holidays.
Thank you, Mylan.
Well, Mayor, I'll take a moment. As you can see, there's several, our whole fire department is here. I know Stephen mentioned earlier that he's stepping down from assistant fire chief, and he did it in a sneaky way so that nobody said anything or gave him too much attention. And that's our typical type of affair, right? Is we don't expect the gratitude, we just do the service. However, I think Stephen, in the years of service he's provided, it goes unnoticed how many times he responds. He typically responds during the day the most, when he's in town and when most of our fire staff is working and somewhere unavailable. So his response is very significant over, over the years, also middle of the night, you can see him there.
Exactly.
So I think with everybody here, we just want to share that we're very grateful for his service, we're very grateful for his mentoring. He's mentored, I think, everybody here, even the fire chief. Noah mentioned earlier tonight that.
So if you don't want me saying something.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, Stephen has been my assistant chief since I became fire chief almost, almost 10 years ago, and he's done wonderful things for the fire department, helped myself, helped all the firefighters out. And yeah, so you'll see some kind of command vehicle he always drives to work. If you always drive by the school district office, you'll probably see one there. Not for too much longer, we'll see, might see one there. But we all, it was mostly Joseph pushing us to do it, his son, to come down here and show our support for him tonight, so sorry for interrupting your meeting.
Is there any chance that they could all come over here?
Yeah, Nancy, tell them. Come on, guys.
Mayor and council, we have to be a little creative to get Stephen to come in and do this last report, otherwise you would not.
Do you want to do this, Chris?
Scouting cozy next to you.
No, no, we volunteered to do this last report by nine of whom were on the event.
If you walk in the fire, I said it's fine.
So anyways, we want to give a thanks to Stephen and good luck.
Don't worry, I'll get them all back eventually.
I'd like to just say one thing, as Mayor, always a nervous Mayor. Few more guys smiling would make me a lot less nervous. It's great to see you and the city appreciates all the service that all of our volunteer firemen are giving. That is a huge thing. It's a real plus, not only for the residents of this city, but also for their insurance bills. The things you do really count in a lot of different ways, and we appreciate it. We sincerely appreciate it.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to ask, great that you've got this many volunteers here. How many more do you have on your list?
10, 10 more?
About 10 more?
11 more.
11, okay, good. No, it's crazy that you all cheer it up.
And I mean, I would say this training, we're down a little bit on our volunteers. A lot of times we'll get close to 20 every training, so.
Very good.
Holiday season's bright.
Good.
And the holiday season, sometimes sadly could be a real fire danger, was it?
Absolutely.
Aging Christmas trees and things.
Yes, yes.
So we appreciate you being here all the time, whether you're in that fire hall or whether you're out fighting fires, you do a great job for Goldendale. Appreciate it, my shaming sincerely. Thank you. Thank you all. Anything else that, what did you say?
No, we're good.
Don't want to cut off the fire.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, call up.
Now, we'll continue on with that report of officers.
Right.
Pardon me? Oh, I was skipping right away.
Just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Thank you, Stephen, for the years of service on the fire department.
Lovely.
That's all I got.
But I just, I'll say one thing if I can. So I've been on there 27 years. I'm not done, but it's just time for me to wear a different hat. We talked about the fire department, his volunteers, it's a lot of hours, it's a lot of times, it's a lot of calls. I don't know how many hundreds of calls I've been on in 27 years. Without naming names, I've been to people in this room's houses for different reasons when they need service. And it's not, there's Larry Hopter, his family is huge in the local community fire service. Andy, he's got a dad, a grandpa, his brother on the fire department. Andy was even on the fire department for a little while. And for me, my dad was on the fire department for 25 years. I've had all three of my sons on the fire department. Both of my brothers have been on the fire department. It's just a volunteer service to the community.
It was incredibly effective volunteer service in a lot of ways, particularly for the young men and women that volunteer. They gain a tremendous amount from participating in a fire department.
Matter of fact, I'll go one more, I said my sons, but I have a son that's in the military now, and he's a firefighter in the military, probably influenced from his time on the Goldendale Fire Department.
Excellent. Thanks, Steve. We do all appreciate your services.
I would like to add that when law enforcement responds to assist fire department, excuse me, I say, nine times out of 10, I run it down on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
Just kind of say along with Andy, just thank you, Steve, for your service as assistant fire chief, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Hey, thanks, Mayor. Hey, I just wanted to thank everybody that worked so hard on the Candy Cane Christmas Parade and the event there at the Masonic Lodge, a really great turnout and just another great parade. It seems like that gets better every year, so thanks to everybody who worked to make that happen. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
I didn't see our picture on the front page either.
I neither.
Steve Johnson?
I just would like to thank the staff and all the employees of all the departments in the city that are working for the city and wish them. in the city that are working for the city, and wish them and everybody in the community a Merry Christmas, and safe and happy holiday.
Thank you, thank you. And on the mayor's side, of course, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to a year of working with you, things that can be achieved, and the momentum we've been building the last two or three months on the work that the city is already passing through, it's good, we're going to benefit from these things. I promised to Steve that I will follow up on chasing that project as well as the money for it, or the ways that we're going to get more of it, or more time.
I trust you will.
We got to do it, we just have to do it. With that, we'll go to the rest of the comment. Anybody here for public comment other than the fire department? Yes.
Name an address.
Susan Kelsey, Goldendale. I came here in the summer for the Observatory Hill signage updates, and it is complete, and I just wanted to let you know that.
Excellent, thank you.
And so, new signs, new decals, and we have some left over, we'll bring it in. We are moving to Idaho in a couple of weeks, so I wanted to make sure that you knew that we completed the project, and thank you very much, it looks really good up there.
Excellent. Pride and joy of Goldendale, I think, and the signs are a part of it. Thank you, appreciate your work too.
Thank you, Susan, we'll miss you.
Have a safe trip. Any other public comment? If not, we have that magical.
Is there anybody, is there anybody online for public comment?
Anyone online for a public comment?
Nope.
Or Mr. Hopter?
Nope.
Can I say one more thing, Mayor?
Sure.
Well, anyway, when she was mentioning the observatory, it's in the governor's budget, capital projects for getting the ramp, we hope it's going to stay there, hopefully it'll be approved by the legislature. Get the ramp in, and that way the observatory will be completed.
That's it, excellent. And I think a lot of that, the support the community has shown for that observatory, I think is a big message to not only the legislature, but to the governor as well. It's been very well treated by that whole operation. Any other things before we call for adjournment? I'm going to drag this out. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded adjourned to the state council for December 19th, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Great work to your council, thank you very much.
I'll be here until nine o'clock.